Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the final meeting of the year for 2022 to order. To Monroe County Council Tuesday, December 20th. And um, let's do a roll call. Let's go around and say here, Counselor Deckard.
Here.
Counselor Munson.
Here.
Counselor McKim.
Here.
Uh, Counselor Crossley.
Here.
Counselor Iverson.
Here.
Counselor Hawke. Counselor Hawke is not here yet, but we will persevere. The first thing we need to do is a, the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone wish to add, change, remove any items?
Yes, Madam President. Sheriff Swain has asked for his item to be removed from the agenda. I move to table item four indefinitely.
Second.
Great, okay, let's. Cross that off. Um, any others?
Madam President, I have a second change. Move to add item nine D Sheriff's Office approval to amend the 2023 salary ordinance.
Uh, that will need a second. Thank you, um. Yes.
Second. Uh, thank you.
So you can add uh, D.
Nine D.
Yes.
And uh, I would like to um, just let everybody know that nine D. I asked Counselor Deckard to do that for me. And what it is, uh, the sheriff's financial manager um, was on vacation and uh, was uh, didn't realize that he needed to update his overtime lines due to the increase. So this is to uh, correct the overtime maximum um, part of the overtime with it for the 2023 salary ordinance.
Okay, great. Thank you, um, are there any other items that need to be added or removed from the agenda?
I think I've actually got a third one.
Okay.
I'm gonna move to add item ninety Sheriff's Office approval to amend the 2022 and 2023 salary ordinance regarding the increase for Chief Deputy and Jail Commander.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So now we have nine D and E added. Are there any other items? Before we grow this agenda into the night. All right. Um, then we shall now um, do a roll call vote, I think, to amend the agenda.
We can do a voice vote if everyone hears in person.
Oh, all in favor of the amendments as noted, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Hey, motion passes. Next, we move to department updates. Do we have any, anyone wishing wishing to make a department update either here or online?
Just wanted to say that Counselor Hawke uh, indicated that she's trying to get on. I'm not sure what the, what the issue is, but I don't know whether she's connected to Zoom or or not, I'm not in as a panelist, so I can't tell, but.
Neither am I yet, so. Oh, now I am, thank you.
I think our auditor has an update.
Uh, Counselor Hawke's name does appear there.
Great, so if you could promote Counselor Hawke, that would be great. Perfect.
It appears I'm on there now.
There you are.
Sorry, guys. This was not my plan for tonight. But now I lost again, okay, great.
Would you like, would you like to turn your camera on?
Yes, that's what I was gonna say.
Right, right. Oh, but I've got to turn my sound on until I get rid of my dog.
You're fine.
Okay. We're gonna turn off.
Okay, did we have a department? Okay, we have a department update now um, from the auditor office.
Good evening, Council, I'm Bree Gregory with the Auditor's Office. I just wanted to give you an update with FEMA, the um, reimbursement that we have been waiting on for a very long time. So um, I was reach at recently contacted by um, the Department of Homeland Security. And they are trying to reconcile our claim submissions um, with the total um, and our um, closeout documents. And they were struggling a bit, so they asked that I resubmit everything, which was um, quite a large project, but I completed that. And it, an exact order of the spreadsheet, um, detailed, color-coded, key to everything. So we should be in fantastic shape at this point, and I confirm they downloaded it. So um, there should be nothing else holding us up. So I'm going to continue to follow up weekly. So we should be expecting that. I think it's around $700,000.
Amazing.
Soon.
Thank you, and thanks for your diligence on that.
You're welcome.
Ms. Gregory. Ms. Gregory. Did they give you any indication when this would be turned around?
They have given none, other than um, you know, apologetically telling me they're severely understaffed and overwhelmed.
Understood, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other departments wishing to make updates? Either here or on Zoom. Okay, I don't see anybody. Who's rushing the stage, so we will move then skipping item number four. We'll just maintain the numbering, so we'll have item number five now.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request to reverse an approval of a fund-to-fund transfer in Fund 49200000 Westside Economic TIP that was approved by Council on November fifteenth.
Second.
Great, and it looks like Bree, you're going to tell us about this one, thank you.
Yes, good evening. So um, this item caught my attention um, a couple of weeks ago when it was being discussed and reviewed. Um, and I was able to determine that this was not a local match, so it's actually not an appropriate. Um, it's not appropriate to transfer the funds, so we just simply need to reverse this, so we're in compliance. And um, and move on, I guess.
Great, um, are there any questions from Council on this item? Seeing none, okay, is there any public comment? If you're on Zoom and want to make public comment this evening, feel free to just raise your hand. I see no public comment, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Uh, the next item, item number six.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 4920000 Westside Economic TIP in the amount of $2,800,000 in the services category.
Second.
Okay, Council, me again, um. This is just another housekeeping item to correct um, the past um, action. Um, so this is why, this will be appropriated upon your approval in the correct fund, and the expense will be taken then from the correct fund.
Fantastic, are there questions from Council on this part? Any public comments? Um, great, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, and that brings us to item seven from the Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for a category transfer in Fund 81509622 TANF of two, $2,286 cents from the Supplies category to $1,394.32 in the Personnel category and $806.54 into the Services category.
Second.
Great, um, I think we have Lori Kelly here on Zoom to tell us a little bit about this item.
Uh, yes, good evening. So this is a housekeeping item, um, in an effort to clean up negative account lines. This grant cycle ended in September of this year. The Futures Clinic is currently pulling from the Title X Funds, but this category transfer will allow unspent revenue to balance the negative Personnel and Service Account Line.
Okay, um, are there any questions from Council on this item? No, um, public comments? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And we have now item B from the same department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for a category transfer in Fund 81539622 Harm Reduction of $185.84 from the Services category to the Supplies category.
Second.
And um, did you have stuff to tell us about this one as well?
Uh, sure, so this is just another housekeeping item, again, just trying to clean up those negative account lines, uh, since we're at the end of the year. In reviewing our claims and reports for the year, an error was found in January of this year. So this category transfer will allow the department to complete an in-house transfer in order to cover this negative balance.
Right, thank you, are there questions from Council? Is there any public comments? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Item C, please.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to create new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in Fund 81119623 Crisis Coag Supplement Workforce of $65,182 in the Personnel category, $24,818 in the Supplies category, and $350,000 in the Services category for a total of $440,000.
Second.
Are there any questions on this item? Oh, I guess I could let you explain, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. Uh, so this is just the second half of the funding for this uh, grant. So as in the previous round here of funding, the department plans to subaward this fund or or these funds, a portion of them, to the local school who opt in to get direct funding. Um, a small portion will be utilized for the school liaison, uh, salary benefits uh, for training and travel expenses and other um, school expenses that may occur. This award is deliverable based. Schools will decide whether they would like to participate or not. Those who to choose to participate will complete a Public Health and COVID-19 Needs Assessment Survey, and they will participate in creating a Communicable Disease Response Plan in order to receive these funds. Uh, we are also doing this round of funding uh, project-based. So we are asking that the schools send us a proposal on projects that they would like to use these funds for. Once all of the schools um, who have been, well, who have chosen to opt in, at that time, we will determine how to um, split the amount of the funds that each school will get.
Thank you, um, and this is merely happening so that we can extend into 2023, is that correct? So I feel like we've already approved a lot of them.
Hmm, yes, so we do have um, salary that is secured already from the first round of funding that will cover um, the school liaison salary through December of 2023. Um, the thought and the hope is to go ahead and secure um, additional funding should it be need for continuing into the 2024-year period. Um, I have reached out to the state um, to find out what the time limit is that we can actually continue to use these funds um, as the contract states that it can either be used within the grant award period and/or thereafter. Um, so just in case we would like to be able to um, have that funding retained for 2024, that's what this is hoping to secure.
I see, thank you, are there other questions? Yes, here.
Uh, yes, Ms. Kelly, uh, the needs-based survey you uh, mentioned a little bit earlier, uh, that's being conducted by the Health Department staff, I presume?
Uh, well, so are, yes, the Health Department along with the school liaison um, will do this along with the schools. Uh, so it's a, it's basically a survey, and then that information is submitted to the state, but all of the work that's being done is in a partnership.
Excellent, and then the results of that survey, will that be also published on the Health Department's website, or is that just submitted to the state?
Um, it is submitted to the state, but um, I will certainly look into see um, if we can publish this information on our website as well.
Uh, thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, is there any uh, public comment on this item? See none, so could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, um, item D.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for additional appropriations in Fund 81509622 TANF Futures of $1,395 in the Personnel category, $6,479 in the Supplies category, and $4,126 in the Services category for a total of $12,000.
Second.
And Ms. Kelly, did you have anything to add to this?
Um, well, so this is for the additional allotment that was awarded back in October of this year for the TANF contract. That contract ended in September of this year. Um, but these funds are being used to now cover negative account lines, and uh, the remainder will be used to cover supply and service charges that are accrued um, during this period as well.
Great, thank you, are there any questions from Council? Any public comments on this item? Hey, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, um, that is everything from the Health Department. So uh, now we are at number eight from Emergency Management.
Counsel, I move to approve the Emergency Management Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 1152000 Emergency Planning Right to Know of $6,500 in the Capital category.
Second, but is it $6,500, is that correct? In the agenda, $6,200.
I see discrepancy, but I'll go with the 200. Uh, I moved to amend my previous motion to 6,200 in the Capital category.
Okay, I'll still second that.
Um, do we have anyone here speaking to this item?
Yes.
TSD, can you please promote Jamie Nibel?
Great.
Good evening, Council.
Hello.
So this is for the Community Right to Know. The uh, Monroe Fire Protection District is requesting funds to purchase some items, I believe maybe in your packet, but possibly not, but um, those were Level A suits, boots, and uh, chlorine and, oh my gosh, another sensor for detection that I don't recall off the top of my head, I apologize.
Ammonia. Chlorine and ammonia, according to our, our, our packet.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
No worries.
Um, but this is, uh, this fund comes from the SARAT Tier Two reporting uh, that is mandatory with uh, Homeland Security for industry that have has extremely hazardous chemicals, they're required to report into the system and pay a fee. And so these funds are distributed to the LEPC from Homeland Security, and that's where the funding is coming from.
Great, thank you, um, are there any questions from Council? No, all right, public comment, oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a brief comment, it's not necessarily germane to this item, but I appreciate very much the Emergency Management Director's work with the fire departments, both Monroe and the City of Bloomington, to coordinate the warming stations for this week. That is a huge thing, and I'm always grateful of this, of that department's ability to work among all the jurisdictions and make things happen. It relieves my mind and it makes me happy that, uh, for government work, how things come out, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your kind comments, I appreciate that.
Um, is there any public comment on the item? Seeing none, could we have another roll call vote?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, and now we have item B from the same department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Emergency Management Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 8119000 Building Resilient Infrastructures Grant of $18,457 in the Services category.
Second.
And do we have, um, did you want to say anything, Ms. Nibel, about, about this one as well?
Sure, so this was a grant that we had applied for in 2020, and we're uh, we received notice that we were going to uh, get, be approved for those funds this summer. We are using these funds to update our Hazard Mitigation Plan, which we're required to every five years. Uh, we're using Christopher Burke as our vendor to do so. Uh, by opening this particular line item, I am able to submit and get reimbursement for uh, the work Christopher Burke is doing from the state.
Thank you. Um, any questions from Council or comments? Okay, um, Ms. Munson, did you have one?
Um, before Ms. uh, Nibel uh, leaves our agenda, um, I'm wondering if we, she might not announce uh, the warming stations that have been arranged for Monroe County that Counselor Deckard referred to.
I would love to, if this is an appropriate time.
Sure.
Okay. Great, so uh, we will have four warming stations, uh, one in Elletsville at the Elletsville Fire Department Headquarters on State Road 46, one on, at the Monroe Fire Protection District Station on Old State Road 37, uh, one at Station Two on the South Side, uh, that's uh, Bloomington City Station Two, and one at Bloomington City Headquarters on Fourth Street. Uh, the hours are 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And uh, I sincerely hope that they are utilized because it's going to be dangerously cold outside the next few days. Those will be uh, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday.
Great, thank you very much for that information. It's good, good to get that out as, on as many channels as possible. And back to the item, was there any public comments? And I do not see any, so could we have a roll call vote? Please.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. And now we are at item nine from the Council Office.
Counsel, I'll be combining items nine A1 and A2 into a single motion. Counsel, I move to approve the formal 2022 and 2023 Salary Ordinance Amendments of the Sheriff Merit Poll Grids, Jail Correctional Center Grids, and the Special Occupation Positions of Captain of Operations and Assistant Jail Commander, which indicates the approved 15% 2022 increase followed with the 5% COLA for 2023. The grids are included on the agenda for review. The effective date of these amendments is October 23rd, 2022.
Second.
Kim, did you want to add anything to this before we?
No, thi- this just represents uh, what you officially approved on December 6th. So this is the grids that the departments can refer to in the salary ordinances.
Great, thank you for putting that together. And are there any questions or comments from Council? Any public comment? Oh, I'm sorry, Hawke.
Uh, yes, um, to begin with, I was concerned uh, because I had asked if the uh, newly elected sheriff had, was receiving emails, and I was told that he was not and would not until after the first of the year. I, I'm now told that he has been informed of this, and so um, I'm perfectly happy to uh, support it.
Great, okay. Um, any public comment on this item? Come on up to the table, please, yes.
Thank you, Council. Uh, I'm just wanting to make sure I'm clear on this, is this affect?
Sorry, can you state your name for the record first, please?
My apologies, my name is Ruben Marte. Thank you.
Sheriff-elect.
Does this affect the actual Chief Deputy and also the Jail Commander? It is not?
Not this, not this, not this.
That's coming out.
So that'll be?
But it's coming.
I see, okay.
Yeah, yep, we've, we amended the agenda.
Okay.
And to add a couple of items into this, but it's coming, and you can just hang out if you'd like.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Um, any other public comments? I do not see any. And then um, we should have a roll call vote then.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor, sorry, Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Which brings us to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend the 2023 Salary Ordinance in Fund 11890000 Recorder's Perpetuation by changing the maximum rate at the part-time hourly range rate from $16.25 to $17.06.
Second.
Counselors, I will be handling this for the recorders since it's a housekeeping deal. It's much as the same, um, what happened was, he didn't uh, take into account the um, the range rate for his part-time hourly, and so he wanted to also um, reward them with the 5% COLA. So we're just moving the base of his part-time hourly to 1706.
The, okay, the top of the range of the base, got it. Um, thank you, are there any questions or comments from Council? Any public comment on this item? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And now we're back to um, item nine C.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend the 2023 Salary Ordinance in Funds 100380 General Fund Jail and 11700380 Public Safety Lit Jail by changing the maximum rate of the overtime line range rate from $48.05 to $50.
Second.
Counselors, I'll be handling this as well, um, this is just to um, um, raise the maximum rate with regards to the overtime line due to the increase that you uh, approved.
Uh, okay, are there any questions from council? Any public comments on this item? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. And now we're going to have item nine D, which was added at the beginning of the meeting.
Council, I move to approve the request to amend the twenty twenty three salary ordinance in Funds one thousand zero 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 five General Fund Sheriff and one one seven zero 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 five Public Safety Lit Sheriff by changing the maximum rate of the overtime lines for the deputies from, pardon my eyes, fifty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents to sixty-six dollars and thirty-three cents, and the clerical from thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents to forty-five dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second.
Again, counsel, this is the same thing due to the increase, um, that the, those departments received. This is just to raise the overtime rate for the salary ordinance for twenty twenty three.
Great, thank you. Um, are there questions from council? Comments?
I have a comment.
What comment? Oh, I'm sorry, Marty.
I have a comment. It is my sincere hope that we will not be using a lot of overtime. But when we do have the overtime, we have to pay.
Well, yes. Thank you for saying that. That's, I think, a sentiment shared by many of us. Um, any public comment? All right, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Now we have item nine E, which was also added to the agenda.
Council, I move to approve the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three salary ordinance amendments of the Sheriff Chief De- Deputy, pardon me, Sheriff Chief Deputy and Jail Commander Special Occupation Positions as follows in order to preserve the compensation hierarchy moving forward. The Chief Deputy and Jail Commander hourly rate will be tied to the merit poll C twenty-five-year lieutenant plus an additional four dollars per hour with an effective date of October twenty third, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Thank you. Um, would you like to talk to us about this lovely new item?
And hopefully shell too.
Yeah. One moment.
Did you have an extra printout by any chance?
Yes, I do. I have one up here.
Oh, okay, great.
I'll use.
Oh, great, thank you. Thank you. And this was sent to council via email as well, right?
Yes, it was.
Beautiful.
So many pretty colors to look at.
Okay, um, so I was asked to put something together to kinda see if we can get the chief deputy as well as the jail commander, um, with the increase that the other, um, special occupations for the sheriff's office, which was the captain of operations and the assistant, uh, jail commander. So I went through and I was trying to figure out the best way to do this. So, um, what I did was I used the same principle that we did uh, and tying those two positions to the merit poll C twenty-five-year lieutenant. And that way, um, if those grids grow, then these four positions will automatically grow as well. Um, the difference before the increase is between the, uh, the top supervisors and then the, um, a captain and the assistant was four thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars. So I tried to find something along that line to, to make a, a good comparison with. So what I did was I used four dollars on the hour on top of the, um, merit poll. And that brings the difference between the two positions and the, the four positions, a five thousand two hundred dollars. So which comes to, you know, when you divide it all out, it, it comes out to like two fifty an hour. So. Uh, with the difference, the difference is two fifty an hour is what I wanted to say, so. But so that, and so then you can see that if you add four dollars to, uh, the base rate, uh, for the fifteen percent increase, it ups the, um, chief deputy and the jail commander to forty-six eleven with an annual of ninety-five, but that, you know, that would be, um, with an effective date of October twenty-third. And then for twenty twenty-three, um, that fifteen percent increase plus the five percent cola ups the, uh, those two positions to forty-eight twenty-two with an annual of, uh, approximately, uh, one hundred thousand two hundred ninety-eight. So, and that's using the same principle, but that this was just a proposal, so that's it.
Okay. Um, let's have questions and comments from council. Do we have any to my left? Yes.
I would like to comment that I really appreciate Michelle's, um, diligent work on this. She went back and forth with various possible scenarios, with the goal being to, uh, regularize the grid for these special, uh, positions. And I think, uh, I think this meets our goal of, uh, of having this grid. And it, I think it communicates well with, uh, with our, our deputies and our jail staff so that they can understand how we got to where we are and, um, it makes the future predictable, I believe.
I, I guess, but I, I also appreciate the work that Michelle has done. I, I do like the idea of having a, a predictable grid. I think that's a worthy goal and the, the better the system, the, you know, the more, more regular the system we have, I think the easier it is to work with and do projections and that sort of thing. I will say that, you know, I, I keep hearing that the, some of these changes are necessary because otherwise you might have employees, you might have managers whose, uh, employees that are reporting to them make more than they, than they do. And personally, I think that that's just fine. I don't think that that's a rule that managers always have to make more than the people they supervise. In my day job, I'm a manager and there are definitely people there who have been there longer than I have who make more money than I do. That's just the way it is. And so I, I, I don't want us to think that that's somehow an inviolable rule that managers always have to make more than the people they supervise. That said, uh, I would like to hear from the sheriff-elect on this and I, I'm certainly, you know, I certainly have no problem supporting it if, if the sheriff-elect does, so.
Right. Um, let me just check, um, to my right real quick. Did we have questions or comments to my right? Or online? I see Marty has something. Okay, Peter Iverson and then Marty.
Thank you. I just wanted to, to also thank, uh, Michelle for her work on this. And I think it's, it's really helpful to have it tied to that, that married deputy lieutenant. That gives a lot of clarification of, of where we, this council can move forward in the future. And I think that's always helpful because we always need a lot of clarification.
You're welcome.
Um, Ms. Hawke?
Uh, yes, I feel, uh, much better about moving forward with this. Uh, once we've heard from the sheriff-elect, I think when you're talking about, uh, the budgets that he'll be working with next year and, uh, so forth, that it's important that, uh, the newly elected people are always, uh, informed as to what decisions are being made. And so I appreciate that that has happened, that he's been notified. It would be hard for me to support this otherwise.
All right, um, I will ask for public comments and I would like to hear from you as well.
Well, thank you again. Do I need to say my name again or word?
Yeah, go ahead, just. Just be efficient.
Ruben Marte, uh, like the sheriff. Um, no, I, I really want to thank you for doing, your counsel, what they're accomplishing this. Being a paramilitary organization, it would have been difficult for us to actually have a manager, uh, really the number two person making less than their subordinate, because what happens is why would you want to do that? With the extra responsibility, so potentially I might even have that position filled because you make more and have less responsibility. So, uh, for us, it's very crucial that, that we maintain that chain of command that the person, the person that on the top makes more than the one that's, uh, the subordinate at that point though. But that being said, I, thank you so much for, for your assistance with this because this would have caused, this would have caused us a lot of problems down the road, um, with the department. So, so thank you.
Um, any other public comments or comments from council as well? No? Okay, um, in that case, let's go ahead and have a roll call vote.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Um, and that brings us to council comments. I know, look at us go.
Look at us go.
Um, do we have any council members who would like to make comment this evening? Sure.
I had a quick one and it's real brief. I, I just want to thank, uh, everyone for all the, the work and efforts that have gone on this year. It's been a long year, right? With a lot of different things. And I was walking around the square, uh, this afternoon and evening, talking with people, seeing people out and about. And what I changed that is from more recent times that we've been in. And so as we kind of enter this holiday season with, uh, some cold weather coming and all those things, uh, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday and, and certainly, uh, tell them, please be safe, look out for each other and, um, don't do anything too wild in some of this weather because, uh, doesn't sound very appetizing.
Go ahead.
I would just like to say, stay safe and stay warm, everybody. We've gone through, uh, we've wrapped up quite a year and we have a wonderful year ahead of us to look forward to. Have a happy holiday.
Uh, comments to my right?
Um, so yesterday hit the one-year anniversary of me being on council and, uh, it's been a very interesting year. It has been a lot of learning, um, a lot of broad shoulders to get. Counselor Hawke, I still remember your message a few weeks ago and I'm still getting those broad shoulders. Um, but you know, it's been a really, um, interesting time, a lot of learning that I have learned from all of the colleagues uh, here on the council. I'm very grateful, uh, every single day of, uh, the council colleagues and our staff that make everything run as smoothly. And of course, our Monroe County employees as well. So from my little Corus home to anybody or everybody else here in the county, just wishing everybody that celebrate holidays, um, you know, happy holidays, Christmas, Chris, I almost said Christmas, Hanukkah, okay? Um, but I, so I said it. All right. So Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, um, Happy Kwanzaa and Happy New Year and looking forward to seeing what the next year brings.
All right, uh, folks, uh, as we come together to celebrate this holiday season, I wanted to take a moment to reflect on this past year and all that we've accomplished as a community. From the thriving tourism industry to the successes of our businesses and the continued support of our townships and local nonprofits, I am proud to say that Monroe County is thriving. But as we come together to celebrate with our loved ones, let us not forget those in need. The holiday season is a time for giving and showing compassion to those less fortunate. I encourage each and every one of you to reach out to make a difference in someone's life, whether it be through donating to a local charity, volunteering your time, or simply spreading joy and cheer to those around you. So as we celebrate and enjoy the holiday season, let us remember to give back to our community and show gratitude for all that we have. I wish each and every one of you a happy and healthy holiday season. And thank you for all that you do to make Monroe County such a wonderful place to call home. And I just wanted to mention that I had some help with that. Uh, that was, uh, generated with a, a little bit of help from ChatGPT. So, uh, we are, uh, welcome you all. Have very happy holidays.
Nice.
Um, I wanted to mention a couple of things. Um, first, um, I'm not sure if we mentioned this in this forum, um, but I wanted to acknowledge that one of our council colleagues received a very prestigious award for her day job um, not too long ago. Counselor Munson was awarded the twenty twenty-two State of Indiana Archaeology Award. Well deserved. And you know, we don't often see each other outside of this context. So I think it's important to recognize achievements beyond council and county government. So congratulations.
Thank you. Can I say something?
Of course.
You didn't know because, uh, as part of receiving the award, I was asked to, uh, do an overview of my, um, research work over the last fifty-plus years in Indiana archaeology. And you all might have felt compelled to have to come to my presentation simply or listen to it. And you didn't have to, so. So thank you.
Um, another, uh, item I wanted to be sure to mention is, uh, more business-like, the, um, county legal department wanted me to remind everyone that the county's request for a rezone on the Fullerton Pike property is on the agenda for the city council to consider tomorrow night. Uh, I believe their meeting starts at six thirty at, uh, the showers building city hall. Um, and oh, did you have something, Peter? Um, yeah, 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 yeah. I just noticed that. Counselor Hawke?
Yes. Um, I just wanted to, uh, thank all of the first responders and all of the people working in public safety because we are really, uh, in the next few days going to recognize how much we rely on them. Uh, the people working, the ambulance service and all of our law enforcement. And, and also the people working in the highway department. This is going to be a very, very dangerous, it appears, uh, time for our highway workers as well. So this county could not, uh, survive if we didn't have those folks that I just mentioned, uh, that's working to try to keep everyone safe. And I certainly do hope that people will, uh, in advance make plans for one place to spend a night because if they're not, uh, be spending the night in the warming stations, uh, and if they're counting on the trustees to find them a spot, don't wait until, until time because you might not be able to reach those folks. It's a dangerous time. Everybody stay well.
Thank you, Marty. Um, yeah, and that, that does just, I'll circle back. I know it's been mentioned, but, um, the warming stations are open Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday from eight AM to six PM. And they are located at Bloomington Fire Station One, which is the headquarters on College Avenue. Um, Bloomington Fire Station Two on Fairfield Drive, Monroe Fire Protection District um, on Old State Road thirty-seven North and the Elletsville Fire Department Headquarters on West State Road forty-six. So, um, hopefully folks are able to get warm as our, our weather is not looking particularly balmy for the next, uh, week or so. So, um, happy holidays to everyone. Stay warm, stay safe, and we will see you in the new year. Um, do we have minutes? Hold on. No minutes. We get to adjourn. We're adjourned. No minutes. We get to adjourn. We're adjourned.